Please, there are any discussion before we open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on bill number one dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony to the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, there was one submission. The council got a full copy of that and included it in a summary that was posted online, and it will be added to the meeting record.
Thank you. We do have speakers signed up in advance. I will call them up. A reminder to those, our speakers getting testimony, you have two minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. Any remarks beyond the two minutes are welcome to share additional thoughts through our online testimony tool. And we, Ms. Sandra Endulis, Jennifer Brienza, Jackie Lynn Kyle, Chris Winechey, and Linda Mazer. Those are five speakers who have signed up in advance. We do have six seats. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, you can come up and introduce your name. Ms. Endulis?
My name is Dr. Sandra Endulis. I've been a veterinarian for over twenty-one years, worked in shelter medicine for eighteen years, former chief of Arnold County Animal Services, and have served on the Animal Welfare Council for the last two years. Tonight, and I had intended to speak on the reconsideration part of this bill, and describe to you what an appropriate change would be made given circumstances should be in order to qualify for a reconsideration hearing to address the conditions under the order. However, tonight, there is an amendment that will allow the designation of a dangerous animal to also be reconsidered, and I strongly oppose this amendment, number fifteen, along with the other amendments which will add at the eleventh hour, amendments twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. I especially disagree with the assertion that any recognized expert, which is a vague label, could overturn the previous designation of a dangerous dog. A veterinarian behaviorist that you don't know is a veterinarian who has not attended college for four years, done a residency for four years, vet school for four years, then passed the board. There are only about fifty veterinarian dogs certified behaviors in the country. So, just getting any person to say that they're an expert is really not very helpful and potentially harmful. I would ask that we please split the bill and go to amendment cruelty section, so that these animals do not suffer another day, and please pass the following sections, the cruelty section, redemption of impaled animals, and adopted animals being... Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brienza?
Hi. My name is Jennifer Brienza. I serve on the Animal Matters Commission, but tonight I'm here again as President Simpson, and I also want to address the amendments we have proposed tonight. I'm a little disappointed that after ten weeks of discussion on this bill, we're here as the doctor who said at the eleventh hour, because some amendments may be very broad and sweeping changes without doing so much as a discussion or, I mean, just a courtesy heads up to receive any input from all of the stakeholder agencies. I understand that the council has been operating without legislative counsel for some time, and now there's a catch-up again. As an attorney, I certainly appreciate the work that I see in the amendments to clean up this clarify statute, but I also see some prepaid substantive changes, such as introducing for the first time this session the ability to request a designation modification, and that's something that had not previously been supported by any of the stakeholder agencies. I'm hoping that the lack of input from stakeholders was simply unfortunate timing. However, since there is only three weeks and one more council meeting left before this legislation expires, I would ask that the council be able to use new amendments for introductions in the near future and pass the bill in its currently amended form, or just table the bill altogether. Neither option is desirable, but I think for these amendments to be rushed through without being metted by the appropriate agencies would clearly be irresponsible. Thank you.
Jackie Kyle?
Jackie Kyle, Bloomberg. As the chair of the Animal Welfare Council, this process has been disciplined to meet the following reasons. The process has not been established. We have given recommendations in the Labor Law Bill, Act twelve dash four dash forty-two, we've not been able to dissolve for a few years. None of which have been incorporated into this bill. Our recommendations have only been able to come through through the county council amendments. The shelter administrator of animal care and control is our liaison for the county. She is present during our meetings and deliberations on legislation, and if she was able to be applicable, she could have explained the intent behind our recommended amendments. The drastic changes in current amendments will not protect public safety, and we ask that you split this bill into a public safety bill which deals with vicious dogs, twelve dash four dash four oh two and four oh three, and table this portion until further discussion from the Animal Welfare Council can be done at our April tenth meeting. You should not delay passing the cost of care portion of cruelty phases, twelve dash four dash ninety-one. These animals should not suffer another day in our shelter, having them do several trials. You should also pass the fee waivers, twelve dash four dash hundred and four, and the Spain New York portion of this bill, twelve dash four dash nine twelve. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Winechey, and I want to say the long-term vote, Crownville, and the president of the Friends and Animal County Animal Care Control, which is a technical nonprofit that is created by the towns and volunteers to help improve the safety of pets in our county. We found out at midday today that four amendments were going to be proposed tonight that would radically revise the public safety portions of this bill. These are not simple tweaks, but major changes that we haven't had time to digest. These last minute proposals only threaten our ongoing concerns with the public safety portions of this bill. We continue to strongly support the cost of care and fee waiver sections of this legislation, and we hope that you approve them, but we urge you to table the public safety portions of this bill until the many complex issues involved can be rewritten to best determine what kept pets cannot safely be part of our community. Hopefully, that everyone from the real experts in animal welfare, such as the county's own animal care control administrator, who has been notably absent from the public discussions of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mazer?
Mazer, seven fifty-two, five zero four, Harmont County. I'm vice chair of the Animal Welfare Council, and I ask that you table amendments to the bill that deal with public safety and dangerous endangered dogs. The amendments that have been put forth tonight have far reaching implications for our public safety and need to be deliberated by our full Animal Welfare Council in order to get meaningful recommendations. For instance, amendment number fifteen, which would allow for the designation of a potentially dangerous dog or major dog to be reconsidered. Has the county fully explored that the type of health and liability that may be incurred on a dog that was once designated as potentially dangerous was reconsidered, taken off the registry, and then goes out and lost a child? Also, with over three hundred dogs currently on the dangerous dog registry, allowing each dog to have their designation reconsidered may look along the current system of the hearings. Is the county planning to expand the Animal Matters Commission in order to handle the influx of requiring case designation? Tonight's amendments are law-ranging, and so they should not be passed at this time. State level meetings that include members of the Animal Welfare Council and Animal Matters Commission should take place prior to passing these amendments. Please split the bill and allow the non-public safety part of the bill to be voted on tonight. Please give the animals that are victims of cruelty some relief now. Have section twelve dash four dash nine oh one and sections twelve dash four dash five oh four and twelve dash four dash nine oh twelve.
Thank you. Pam?
Ms. Lashaw, Madam Secretary. I am a citizen, lobbyist for the Bean Society and the ASPC for the last twenty years in Capitol Hill here in Annapolis, and also a dog owner and a foster for the last twenty years. Just actually had a big emergency vet last night for six hours in one foster who was passing away of cancer, and my little dog today who swallowed something he shouldn't have. I am agreeing with a number of the stakeholders here about the secondary part. As I've been here a couple times testifying, my concern is that we're trying to, and I think the heart is in the right place, we're trying to put fixes to something that is fundamentally not sound. The core deal is not sound, and one of the things I focus on is that, for example, in the bill talks about the purpose of bills to revise the burdens of proof. By reckoning and reacting to the amendments, section twelve four two four oh two, for example, it says, if you go to four, twelve four four oh two, potentially dangerous and public safety threat. For example, A, public safety threat, section five, while a large jesus or approaches law fully, is standing next to animal in an aggressive manner. Well, definitions in twelve four one oh one, it's how the definition for aggressive manner, so you make that determination by paying to twelve four four oh one, the individual who is in the determination is animal control agency, which is the chief of police, which doesn't seem to be someone who's probably the most experienced of any, wanting to get determination off a definition that's not even defined. So, I'd like to, I, you know, I would love to table the bill and keep working on this with the experts involved, but I do agree that there are dogs that are being harmed in the system right now, so I would defer to their recommendations about the care component that we need to fix. This is a house of foundation, it's a crack foundation.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience who should speak at this time on bill number one dash twenty-four? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing for bill dash one dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please. Bill number one twenty-four, in ordinance concerning public safety, animal care and control, potentially dangerous, dangerous, and vicious animals. Do you have amendments? Madam Secretary, please read amendments number twelve. Amendment number twelve, this amendment provides for the conditions under which an animal designated as potentially dangerous or dangerous may be maintained. This is reply, and the time is now, Madam Secretary, you have the floor.
So, before we begin, I do want everyone out there to know that we've heard this has been a very challenging bill, as we've tried to weigh everything that we've had coming back and forth, and these amendments, some attempts by several of us to come up with the best thing. It's clear that we have not reached that best part yet. I think we all agree there are parts of this bill that everyone is, believes need to pass sooner, as soon as possible, that would really be a benefit, but there are some others that we still have some disagreement on, on how we can handle it. Unfortunately, we're getting close to the end of the legislative process, and I have a question for, not a parliamentarian, is there a possibility to hold this bill until later in the session and come up with a different kind of amendment?
Yes, you can delay to a time certain, at the end of the meeting.
Okay. I think I would...
End of this meeting.
End of this meeting, so I could ask... Should do an additional amendment, instead of to hold what we're doing here and do an additional amendment at the end. So, do I just make a motion to do that?
Motion.
A motion to table to a time certain, at this one, just for the end of the...
This is the entire bill.
Yeah, entire bill.
There's a motion on the table to table?
A motion on the table to table the bills on the end while we're going to be working to try to come up with...
Wait, 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 wait. Is that, except for the other amendments that are, the other three that have been rewritten, are one as well?
Yes, it does. So, we're table the whole bill and discussion, and the amendments run until the end of the meeting. So, that it's later in the agenda, is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
One more information. Could you just clarify with the audience why we're doing this? I know why you're doing it, but I want to make sure, because I see people looking confused and unsure why, and wondering why we're pushing for the end.
Exactly. So, from what we're hearing is that there is desire to perhaps split this bill and to address a certain portion of it tonight, and to work on other portions later on. So, we would, I would like us to see if we can perhaps have an amendment that would allow us to do that, so that we can pass tonight the portion that I think we all agree is the most urgent, and the others that we can continue to work on to refine and language. So, that is my intent.
I'm sure. I think I heard something that, well, I'm sure.
Is there a second? To table, this is an amendment to table this bill until the end of the meeting, and we'll take up this conversation again.
Right, right, exactly.
Take this conversation to the end of the meeting.
Correct, I have a question.
Yes.
So, the, let's start with the next, this meeting will probably last two or three hours. Is it realistic to believe that we're going to give a man, couple amendments, and then three hours while we're going on middle legislation? Is it possible to just withdraw all the amendments, put them in the bill, and then modify the bill with future legislation intended from the decisions?
There, there is a possibility for that, and that still could happen, but that would mean that even the provisions that I believe that we had agreement on about not letting certain animals languish at animal control for extended period of time, if we just end the bill and we have to reintroduce it, we're looking at another ninety days.
No, I was saying, pass the bill, and then come back to legislation to modify those parts that are questionable.
That could be a possibility, too. So, but...
Well, I'm just...
Right.
I'm wondering, I'm simple, is it a great Korean or a yellow Korean, right?
Yes.
Well, the motion that has been lifted is to table this bill until the end of the meeting, post resolution number eight, so, and then we can... Madam Secretary, we call the roll on that motion. Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfke?
Aye.
Ms. Teager?
Nay.
Ms. Robyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion to table down under one twenty-four until the end of the meeting has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number four dash twenty-four. Bill number four twenty-four, in ordinance concerning personnel. Mr. Hunt, this is the county executive bill on your panel, samples, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration committee, our Anna Dyer from the county executive's office, Gloria Fossey from the office of law, and Angela Husky from the Jack, and Jack Hatterson from the office of personnel. This bill as well has also been discussed at several prior council hearings and work session, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Dyer, Katie Miller Thomas.
I just very briefly want to thank you all for your time over the past several weeks discussing this bill and our personnel processes, and the findings and recommendations of the workforce, the barriers that are currently based in navigating our personnel system and having an efficient and effective process for the personnel hiring. So, you're having handled amendments, and we'll see you guys up on the floor there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on bill four dash twenty-four before we open the public hearing? We will now open the public hearing on bill number four dash twenty-four. We do not have anyone signed up to speak in advance. If there is anyone here now who wishes to speak on bill number four dash twenty-four, please come up to the table and have a seat. Learning is your turn, state your name and address for the record, and remarks will be limited to two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, I'm going to close the public hearing on bill number four dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number four dash twenty-four. Bill number four twenty-four, in ordinance concerning personnel. Madam Chair, can I also just state for the record that we did not have any submissions of online testimony? Thank you, I forgot to ask that. Thank you. We do have amendments. Is there any discussion before we get into amendments? I do want to take a minute to precipitate the thank yous and the gratitude for the work that's been done between this last meeting and this, to come up with a compromise amendment that I think this council was all interested in. So, thank you very much, Ms. Dyer and team. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight. Amendment number eight, this amendment allows the personnel officer to assign current employees to vacant positions without county council approval. If the pay rate for the vacant positions does not exceed the base of the employee's current pay grade by more than ten percent, the position remains in the same county department, and the controller certifies that funds are available. This is my amendment and Ms. Summer's amendment. It does what it, Madam Secretary, just said it does. Is there a motion to adopt? Robyn, send it. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on amendment number eight? Would you all like to comment, Ms. Dyer?
So, again, just we appreciate all the conversations. We're comfortable with where this amendment has ended. I understand the council's desire to have a little more oversight on the vacant group classifications, although there are some threshold that have to slow it down.
Is there any discussion, further discussion on amendment three? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eight. Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfke?
Aye.
Ms. Teager?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number eight has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number nine. Amendment number nine, this amendment requires county council approval if the base of the new pay grade that is assigned to an existing dog classification exceeds the base of the current pay grade by more than ten percent. This amendment also says what it says, what you just said it does. This is sponsored by myself and Ms. Summer. Would the administration like to comment on amendment number nine?
Just again, we appreciate the collaboration in getting to this amendment, and we are comfortable with the position.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Robyn, send it.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on amendment number nine? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number nine. Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfke?
Aye.
Ms. Teager?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number nine has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number ten. Amendment number ten, this amendment requires a quarterly report from the personnel officer to the county council on changes to the classification plan. Thank you again, this amendment says exactly what Madam Secretary said, this is my amendment and Ms. Summer's. Is there a motion to adopt?
Robyn, send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does the administration have any comments?
Again, we're comfortable with where this amendment ended and understand the desire to have more frequent communication, but we are missing it.
Is there any discussion on amendment number ten? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number ten. Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfke?
Aye.
Ms. Teager?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number ten has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please call, please read amendment number eleven. Amendment number eleven, this amendment prestates the method for hiring nonrepresented classified employees on the LG pay scale above the minimum pay, requires personnel officer approval for a pay rate exceeding a certain amount, and clarifies that a pay rate may not ever exceed the maximum paid of agreed. Thank you, this is my amendment. After further consultation and discussion, we decided to restate the amendment from previous meeting. Is there a motion to adopt? Robyn, send it. Is there a second?
Second.
Does the administration have any thoughts on amendment number eleven? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfke?
Thank you. Does this mean that we're going to hire somebody at more than fifteen percent of the minimum pay grade on animals, and we have the personnel officers' approval, we as the legislative branch?
Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eleven. Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Summer?
Nay.
Mr. Wolfke?
Aye.
Ms. Teager?
Nay.
Ms. Robyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative, amendment number eleven has tabled. Thank you, everyone, for that collaborative work on bill number four dash twenty-four. Bill number four dash twenty-four will be heard as amended on April first, twenty twenty-four. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of bills number six dash twenty-four and bill seven dash twenty-four. Bill number six twenty-four, in ordinance concerning general development plan, region two plan. Bill number seven twenty-four, in ordinance concerning progress of zoning, region two. This is, these are administration bills. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Christina Pompas, Cindy Carrier, and Mark Wildomer from Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Tenny from the Office of Law. So, these two bills address region two, and I'm happy to turn it over to Ms. Ovichin wants to make any additional remarks. I know we discussed this bill as well prior to the end of our session.
Christina Pompas, please, any questions you may have? Thank you. Is there any discussion at this time on bill six dash twenty-four or seven dash twenty-four? I would ask if anyone objects to a joint hearing on bills number six dash twenty-four and bills number seven dash twenty-four, as they are both related to region two.
I just have a question, but okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead and ask your question before I open the public hearing.
Thank you. This is for you, Ms. Kenny. Hot seat, sorry about that. The sign requirement that we put in last year, that was the bill that said that if we changed anything from what the recommendation was from SAC or OBZ, that we have to do the posting and the signing and all this other stuff. My question is this, I've seen that if we were to keep something exactly as it is, and that is not what's recommended by OBZ or SAC, so I'll give you an example, property is owned RLD, property owner never asked for it to be changed. SAC and OBZ say, let's change it to something else. For us to say, we're going to keep it what the property owner has and not make any changes, we have to do this sign posting thing, we have to do the period of time where that sits out there, we have to do an amendment, my understanding of that process is correct?
Kelly County Supervisor, County Attorney. Yes, that is correct, based on the bill sixty-nine twenty-three that enacted the criteria for the term provisions.
All right, so then here's the bigger question. Could we pass an amendment to these bills that supersedes that provision of the code without having to come in with a standalone bill that would fix this for all subsequent regions? The reason I'm asking that is, I don't think there's enough time for us to be able to make that change, to say, we're keeping something exactly as it's owned right now, can we get rid of the sign requirement? I don't think we have enough time to do a bill to say that and get it through before these plans expire, or these bills expire. So, that'd be something we could do by individual amendments to each of these.
Kelly County Supervisor, County Attorney, let me make sure I understand your question. So, you're asking whether you can do an amendment, I guess, with each potential zoning change, that would somehow, or make an amendment to this bill that would take away the requirements of sixty-nine twenty-three?
Say, we're going to, we're going to take the requirements of sixty-nine twenty-three to the extent that we're going to keep a property exactly as it's owned now, and we're not going to change it. So, we're going to go against what SAC and OBZ recommend, and we're just going to keep the zoning exactly as it is, the sign requirement set by. Could we go on to amendment to this bill, not to each amendment, but to the whole bill?
To the whole bill. Mr. Wolfke, I don't think that we could do that, because I think it would violate one subject rule, because these bills adopt the region plans, and then the second bill adopts the conference of zoning, but makes no changes to the code itself. So, we could certainly consider that and get back to you upon further consideration, but I don't think that we could do that because of, before that reason, because we really aren't having any changes to the code in this bill itself. And so, to do that, kind of coming in and making a change to a provision of the bill outside of what the topic of this bill is.
The topic concerning the side requirements or... The topic is only, the side requirements are the zone, the code.
Well, the topic is actually general development plan, it happens, it's owning, where as usually a bill is making a change to Article eighteen, the topic is zoning, you know, Article eighteen. I'm not absolutely saying no, we're certainly happy to look into that, and we're obviously exploring that question for you, to see if there's different options. And I understand the question, you're looking at whether you amend this bill, or whether you have to do a standalone bill, which would at least, if it was an emergency measure in that nature, would at least be in effect in time, or is it up to the region, even if not in effect, in time for these regions?
Yeah, I think the check, the target I see is, is a fair region to set, if we realize this is an issue in front of us, and then we have these other regions coming, and we say, we're going to fix this for the other region, but not for seven, that seems to be problematic, especially given the number of amendments that people at some point may want to bring before the council, and these side requirements are any less valid than how old this is. So, to the extent we're prior to do this, I'm interested in hearing that.
I understand the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to piggyback off that last comment, if, please bring down, if you're in your bill version, you determine that it is not feasible, please track the bill to come down to, at least reiterate that from the subsequent bills, that I'm one hundred percent on board with that. I will say, and I want to say for the record, that sometimes I think council intent, sometimes plays out in legal sort of drama out there in the world, but I must say, when I, when I first considered it too weak, as well as the provision that we did in the other bill, my assumption was, and this is just me being completely transparent, is that if we're going to be making changes that impact those communities, that it was inherent for us to make sure we communicate that to the public. I wasn't, for me personally, I wasn't thinking, oh, if this stays the same, I got to communicate that it's staying the same to the public. That didn't cross my mind, and so I just wanted to say that as we go down this pathway to figure that out, but I'm certainly working with plenty of them, because we have a number of amendments that will be tripling in, and they'll probably, we're closing in maybe twenty, thirty signs-ish.
More than thirty.
Exactly, on this specific issue, you just see, especially for the ones that are the same, it's staying currently, R one, we want to keep it R one, but yet we have to jump to this to keep it R one. I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I think as we contemplated bill sixty-nine, twenty-three, we didn't, we weren't able to maybe fully appreciate in the hypothetical what it would look like as we played it out. So, I think this council should certainly collaborate with the Office of Law and O P Z on any, how, any fix we can do, whether it's a new piece of legislation, whether it's emergency legislation, I think we should, but our thinking caps on to work collaboratively. It seems like there's a consensus on the council that lessons have been learned. With that, there's no further discussion at this time, I am going to open the joint public hearing on bill six dash twenty-four and bill number seven dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Madam Chair, there was no testimony received for bills six twenty-four and seven twenty-four for the region two plan and comprehensive zoning laws.
If there, we have no one signed up in advance to speak, that I'm aware of. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on bills number six and seven dash twenty-four, please come up to the table and have a seat, when it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Mr. Waller, you have the floor.
Thank you, Eric Waller, Justin Maryland. Alan Ross and I have gone door to door in the last month, I did, in Mr. Smith's district, and talking to the community residents about the consistency act, the plan document, and the consistency spreadsheet. We got a lot of feedback. Unfortunately, I can't quote the feedback in this mixed community of seven people, because it wasn't very nice. The community is upset because they didn't know that what was going on, and we talked to about fifty people door to door, plus another fifty showed up at a general, J I A town hall meeting. And people are mad because they don't, they didn't know this was coming, they didn't know the property was being rezoned from open space to R one. It, you know, it's just amazing, maybe the comments that we got, and we're very disgusted that these changes, people didn't, are being opposed, people didn't get a certified letter that said, hey, we're going to do something to your property. And people want to be, think they need to be informed, we had the plan from forty, we had the plan of region two for two years, and not once would the, would the members of the SAC, April Walter Kebner Department, Nicole Welch, plenty of opportunities to come out and meet with the community at a town hall meeting. If I could call me, and I can get fifty people to show up, and, well, they gave Mr. Smith a hard time that night, but if, if I could do it, what's the problem with O P Z? They can only get a meeting where there's Ellen, me, Haggard, Scott, Scooter, who are back in the development. You know, that should say there's something wrong with the process.
Thank you, Mr. Waller. Ms. Fox.
Before I start, if somebody has a map, would you like to show it to me, or someone in the paint? Yeah, I think it's on, just, okay. My name is Kate Fox, I live in Davidsonville, and I'm the chair of the State Committee of Protection Network. County West County is some of the worst in the county, the roads are consistently choked with traffic even outside the two watch hour period. The Odenton and Savage train stations traffic for being an NSA, major of blood dissection. Yet there is no specific county busters between those stations, as you can see on the map. Many of the roads in the residential areas of the streets are based on former muddy roads, as Eric says, and are not active, subject to population densities that will increase density of residential and commercial debt to reduce the type of poses. And there's limited adjoining lanes to standard approve the roads. Check, the region two plan includes several transit oriented development policy overlays without the existence of transit or regular train service currently funded to the Savage station. This makes no sense. As I mentioned in my earlier testimony, we need the transit plan first, then identity development. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on either bill six or seven dash twenty-four? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on, the joint public hearing on bills number six and seven is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of bills number six dash twenty-four and seven dash twenty-four.
Bill number six twenty-four, in ordinance concerning general development plan, region two plan. Bill number seven twenty-four, in ordinance concerning comprehensive zoning, region two.
Is there any further discussion from the council on, do you hear bill six dash twenty-four or seven twenty-four at this time? Seeing none, demand get a motion to hold the vote on bills number six dash twenty-four and seven dash twenty-four until April first, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to vote to, close the session, let's go.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote.
Ms. Sladebetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Mr. Volpe.
Aye.
Ms. Seidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodden.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickers.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to hold the votes on bill number six twenty-four and seven twenty-four has been passed.
Madam Secretary, I just wanted to go back in time, if I could, I'm, I believe I meant to leave the public hearing on bills six and seven open.
You wanted to hold that?
Yes, we were going to keep those open. But I'm afraid I'd just close the public hearing.